Call the meeting to order, please write for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the October 1st, 2019 Post Falls City Council Meeting, Shannon. Please note that all council members are present. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, we have none tonight, but I do want to make an introduction. I had the pleasure of meeting Governor Brad Little's North Idaho Field Director earlier today, Jake Geringer, Coeur d'Alene boy, who, whose experience was, whose education experience took him all over the world, but he's now back and he's representing Governor Little up in North Idaho. So Jake, welcome and thanks for attending tonight. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict?
No.
Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the September 17th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Item B is payables, September 10th through September 23rd, 2019. Item C is construction improvement agreement, Tullamore 8th addition. Item D is Maple Grove Manor First Edition subdivision plat application. Item E is Travis Place subdivision plat application. Item F is reasoned decision for the landmark place annexation. Item G is reasoned decision for the Prairie and Spokane Street annexation. And item H is reasoned decision for the Nelson Williams annexation.
Any questions?
Move for the approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is public hearings and tonight we are, it's a continuation of the public hearing we had two weeks ago. So with that, I will reopen the public hearing. And Warren, just for my own edification here, we, we've listened to testimony and rebuttal, et cetera, so now it's just additional information from staff and then council deliberation?
Yeah, and I double-checked quickly before we started, there was no one that signed up for testimony again tonight, so.
Good. Thank you. Rob?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. One minute while I get the computer up and running. Last month, you opened a public hearing regarding the potential for a subsequent user fee establishment along State Highway 41 from Hope Avenue to Prairie Avenue. And at that meeting, you were presented with a city staff report and you heard testimony from both those in favor and those against. And tonight, you have the option to take additional testimony if you so choose. But to go over the salient points from the staff report again, and this is just from the two or three last slides which were at your last City Council meeting, nothing new being entered. Subsequent user, if adopted, is for initial five-year time period. The fees of the subsequent user fee would be paid for at the time of land development, when that land connects to city sanitary sewer. There are four parcels in the area identified that are in the county. They would not be paying a subsequent user fee until such time as, one, they annex into the city of Post Falls, and, two, they would be doing a land development activity that would require them to connect to city sanitary sewer. There are properties that are not reimbursable in the area. There are five of them. Two are the proponent's properties, and the other three are properties that were subject to a previous agreement between the proponent prior to the construction of the sewer. The city staff did do a fee analysis. These are the properties which were identified in that fee analysis area. The two in green are the proponent's properties. The three in blue are the areas that are subject to a previous agreement with the proponent. And then the final fee on there is $2,476.37 per acre for a parcel when it connects to the sanitary sewer. That's in addition to any other cap fees, and that money would go back to the developer. So, tonight, after your final deliberation, staff is looking for your direction as to whether or not to proceed with the formation of a resolution to establish a subsequent user fee, or if necessary, to make any modifications to the area boundary, affected properties, or the fee analysis itself. I stand for any questions that you might have.
There she is, Rob, at this point? No. Rob, I'm curious, you indicated $2,476.37 per acre. How does that compare to, you know, a user fee or a cap fee as it would stand right now?
The city cap fee right now is $5,000, a little over $5,100 per service unit, and a service unit is a single-family residential home.
So would this, would that be reduced, then, our cap fees, or is this on top of the cap?
No. This would be, they would pay the cap fee to the city of Post Falls, and then this amount of money would go back to the developer to pay, to reimburse them for their proportionate share of what it would have cost to have built that sewer.
Okay, in addition to, pardon me, in addition to their cap fee.
So it's in addition to the cap fee.
So somebody that's right across the road, that's hooking up to our existing sewer, would not have to pay this?
Someone across the road, I'm going to utilize Tullamore because they are across the road. When that subdivision went in, they invested and they put in money to put sanitary sewer in the streets. They put in the cost of a lift station. All those costs of the developer went into the building of that subdivision. And either the cost of that sewer outright, or a portion of it, goes into the cost of the lots when they sell and then develop homes on those parcels.
Okay. I just wanted to know how much of an impact this is going to have on those people along that sewer line, like, and it sounds like they're going to pay, like, an extra $2,500 bucks.
That is correct.
I had a question, Mr. Wilson. I don't know maybe if it'd be you or Rob. Mr. Evelyn testified last meeting, never did say if he was for or against, but his comments would lead me to believe he was against this. But I didn't understand why. He was talking about specific properties. And I'm trying to figure out what he was talking about, what his point was on that. Certain properties along that that he mentioned were residences.
Yeah, he, one of the things I remember him talking about was a number of these parcels are currently in the county. They're not in city limits. And he, he wondered whether or not this would impact them. The answer is not unless they annex. So if they stay there for the, the length of time of this fee arrangement, and they don't annex, they don't redevelop, they're not going to pay the fee. The fee would end after that, subsequent to that point in time. If they wanted to annex and develop, they wouldn't pay the fee because the fee is only for a set period of time.
Oh.
And, Mr. Mayor, the parcels that are in the county, if you look at the map, are right in this general area. These three here, and this is in the city, but is a, I think there's a single-family residence on that one as well.
Okay. So they would not pay unless they were, in fact, annexed in?
Yeah. So either you're annexing it or you're doing some development work of some sort on the site.
Go ahead, Linda.
Rob, how, how large are, do you know how large those parcels are? That number 12, that little 13, and then the one on nine there?
So parcel number 12 is 5.03 acres. Parcel number 13, 1.08 acres. And parcel, let's see, you want the county ones?
The Hope one, the, the one that would be affected, that number nine.
Okay. Number nine is 4.22 acres.
And so, the 2,000 and, just bear with me for a minute while I get back to that. The 2,000 and, the $2,476.37 would be per acre. If this was subdivided into small lots, I guess I'm, when it's annexed into the city, or when does this come into, I guess I'm missing something.
So, when they annex into the city of Post Falls, we would push that with the annexation agreement, that that property would be made subject to the subsequent user fee. Then, when they move forward and develop that land, the lands developed, they would extend sanitary sewer to it. They would still not have to pay the, the service fee. When they subdivide the land and create, and if they take a five-acre piece, and let's say they do three units per acre, they create 15 lots on it. At the time that they pull a building permit, they would pay the city the sewer cap fee, and then they would pay this subsequent user fee at the time that building permit is issued. We would then take that subsequent user fee and we would transfer that money to the applicant.
Okay. And so, then what is the difference between this and a latecomers fee, a latecomers fee that we have seen before?
A subsequent user fee is synonymous with the latecomers fee.
Okay. So, is the reason that we're looking at it, at it now, is because it was not brought up at the time that the sewer was put in, when they developed the land? Is that why we're looking at it now instead of, and this was not put in it in the beginning? It was left out? Was it inadvertently left out? Did they not need it?
The developer talked with the city as far back as my recollection is, in 2016, when they were first moving forward with the project of what were the city's codes and requirements, and asked about whether or not they could pursue this route, and we gave them the direction as to what needed to be done. Staff did approach City Council in June of 2018 at the request of the developer to come to you to ask about doing a fee analysis, which was, which was a required step. And then, in the fall of 2018, we had a public hearing scheduled before you that was pulled because of a late development of a previous agreement between the developer and three of the parcels that were in the development area. And then it had been almost a year, and now we're back before you with that public hearing.
Any other comments or thoughts? You know, philosophically, I'm not opposed to a late, well, I guess we can do that under deliberation, can't we? So, anything else before we close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. So follow-up, philosophically, I'm not opposed to a latecomer fee. I think if you put it in, if you've got someone that wants to go out into an area and you need to get sewer out there, and they run the pipe out and incur the expense, and subsequently, people come in in the interim area to develop, you know, I think, I have no problem with them, with them paying their fair share. I guess I just, my question, I know Counsel Wilhelm and I have visited on this, is what steps you need to go through? Can you do it and then come back after the fact? Should it be done up front? How do we structure it? Is this kind of a unique situation?
This is the process our code spells out currently.
So they wouldn't have to do it when they put the sewer or the infrastructure in initially?
Yeah. There's nothing like that built into the code at the moment.
I was going to ask, Rob, do we kind of see this as a unique situation and probably a one-of-a-kind, or do you see us using this for future projects anywhere coming up?
It is something that is currently allowed within our code for developers to request the formation of. I don't recall when we first created subsequent user fees, but it was somewhere between 2004 and 2007 timeframe. And in over 10 years, we have only had one subsequent user fee ever established in the city of Post Falls. And that was for the, I don't remember the name of the subdivision right now, but it was all over on Pole Line Road, and they never collected a dime on that. And this is only the second time we've had, had a request.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd also add that moving forward, staff would probably want to talk with you about this process. It's, it can create some issues, and it's someone, something we'd like to revisit. We decided to hold off on doing that because this request was already in the hopper, and we didn't think that was fair to have somebody actually get into the process and then say, let's pull the rug out from you. So it is something we want to revisit with you, is this process down the road.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see where anybody is harmed by this. There's no cost to the taxpayer, per se. The parcels to the south, if they develop, if they were to develop and the proponent wasn't there, they'd have to bring in sewer and pay for it anyway. I don't, I just don't see where the harm is in this anywhere.
I think it can actually be used, and maybe contrary to Mr. Wilson's saying with staff's concerns, but if you look at on the west side, we've got folks looking to relocate out there, and there's no sewer out there, and it's, it's expensive to get it out to their location. You know, a latecomer fee may encourage them to do it if they know they could recoup some of those costs. So I think from an economic development standpoint, it could be a good tool, but that's just me.
Yeah. I myself don't have any issues with it either. I think he made a commitment to try to, he took a chance to develop out there and put it in, and I think it's only fair that anybody else coming along helps, helps defer part of the cost that he initially incurred for it, so.
Well, we're not forcing anybody.
No.
No. They don't ever want to hook up.
Then they don't hook up.
Yeah.
You know, if they don't ever, so, nobody's, we're not holding a gun to anybody's head here saying, you got to pay the $2,400 bucks.
It's an option they have.
Yeah.
So you need, the action tonight would be a motion to?
A motion to approve.
Just to approve, okay.
A move to approve the continuation of State Highway 41 sewer, Hope to Prairie subsequent user fee.
Second.
Motion several seconds. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have none, followed by citizens' issue. And this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address a council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. See no takers.
See no citizens.
Do you have an issue?
They're all citizens. Next up is new business. Tonight we have none. Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have none. We're going to make up for it. We've got four administrative staff reports. So the first is an update on citizen concern on the traffic on Pole Line and Seringa. Chief?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. Seeing, last council meeting, we had the individual come forward about some concerns they're having up on Seringa and Pole Line. Probably sure you saw Lieutenant Brannan go out and meet with that individual shortly after the meeting, just to get some more idea of what was happening, more better time details that we could get. We sent a traffic team up there. They did a site inspection and found that the crosswalk markings on the ground were not painted this year, but quickly fixed by the streets, thanks to streets. They went right out there and took care of that. The video camera from engineering was going to be installed to give us counts for the crosswalk location, just to give us some justification on the flashing warning devices, I believe that Councilman Anthony talked about. That camera will be going out later on. This weekend, it had a snafu, so it was not deployed. But Rob and I spoke today, and that will be going out there shortly. The PD installed their traffic unit, installed the jammer unit up there, which is our mechanical tracking device, tracks vehicles' speeds, gives you the best time and locations for enforcement if you're going to take that, if you have an issue up there. I'll give you those numbers real quickly, but we installed it up there for a week. It went up on the 24th. We took it down on the 29th. And then, traffic units were spending about 30 minutes in the evening, I'm sorry, in the afternoon after schools, and they reported not a single crosswalk violation in the location, or a speed violation while they're up there. Not to say that that's not a concern. I know one of the concerns that was spoken about was the, the noise from probably exhaust, something like that. So our traffic units will spend some time up there, and the other concerns were potentially on the crosswalk issues. The jammer, though, did read over 50,000 vehicles. It's important to note that 49,580 of those vehicles were going under 40 in the 35 zone. So probably due to the, roundabouts, I call them spinning loops, but roundabouts. Have several in that location. Doesn't give cars, the team, time to speed up, and so by that time, you're seeing that. And we give it a five mile-per-hour tolerance. It's typically what we'll do. So I think it's important to note that only 1.6% of those vehicles, over 50,000 vehicles, were over 41 miles an hour. So we didn't see that as a big traffic speeding concern. The crosswalk violation things, I think it's also important to understand. I think a lot of things, as I debate with my own wife on this, she seems to think that the people standing on the side of a crosswalk have the right of way, and they can go at any time. That's not what state statute says. State statute says that if you're actively in a crosswalk, then the pedestrian has the right of way. But if they're not, then the vehicles have the right of way. But the other snafu to the state code says that once one vehicle stops, you all have to stop to allow that person to cross. So when some people call in with concerns about crosswalks, you go out and monitor it. Typically, what you see is that traffic won't stop for someone across the road, which is the right thing to do, but it's not by state statute that they have to. It just says that if they're actively in a crosswalk, then you have to yield to them. So, anyway, so we got Lieutenant Brannan was down at the chief's conference with Greg McLean this week. As soon as they're back on Thursday, he's going to march up there and meet with the citizens, give them the readings, the findings, and then we'll do some follow-up enforcement.
Good. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate the follow-up. And also remember, your wife's always right.
I've learned that after 25 years.
I was going to tell you, I don't know if it was the next day, but it was, I'm going to say, I don't know if anybody can answer that question, how soon it was that they were up there repainting that crosswalk, but it wa, where I was thinking, wow.
Would have been the following day.
Was it the, I was going to say, I knew that it was, it was, yeah, good customer service. I was pretty impressed.
And the departments worked so well together. The communication's great. They, they just get the job done, so it's great to see.
And that crosswalk was disappearing, you know, I mean.
The, the paint was, but it's clearly marked. You know, the signs are up there, both in all directions, but the paint wears off pretty quickly.
Made a huge difference, but yeah, wow.
Drove up there today. Interesting to see that some of the paint's already coming up. So it, it comes up pretty quickly.
That was impressive.
Just a comment, too. Thank you for all the data and everything else. And one thing I would like to point out, though, is that, you know, 1.6% of 50,000 cars are still 800. So it's still 800 that were going over 40 miles an hour through that. So it's, and I know you're not. You guys never do. You're not just going to blow it off, oh, it's only 800 cars. But I think it still remains a valid concern. I appreciate you taking the time to, to continue to dig into it.
You bet. You bet. Thank you.
The next item up is the update on the Idaho to Bay Street pedestrian path project, which I happen to walk.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Back in 2016, the city of Post Falls applied for a grant from the Idaho Transportation Alternatives Program for the construction of a sidewalk along Seltis Way from Idaho Street to Bay Street. We were approved for the start of design in 2018, and the project moved forward with construction this last summer. Tonight, I want to give you a tour of the eastern end of this project from a drone's perspective, and at the same time, give you a little montage of pictures showing both the before and after of what the project looked like. And the pictures are scattered throughout the entire project, whereas the drone video itself is just on the eastern end. The city of Post Falls had applied for grants to put in sidewalk along this section of Seltis Way numerous times back in the late 1990s and early 2000s. And the need for this project was well evidenced by the dirt path that was worn in by bicyclists and pedestrians. Pedestrians have varying capabilities. We saw young children walking along that route. We saw elderly individuals who were utilizing walkers along this route. And during times of inclement weather, we saw people walking along the edge of the roadway and sometimes almost in the traffic lane to get around snow and mud. The reason this area is important for pedestrians and bicyclists alike is that it provides a lot of access to local services, restaurants, groceries, hardware stores, housing, and medical services. We ended up building a six-to-eight-foot-wide concrete sidewalk of approximately a half-mile in length. We also provided a sidewalk connection from Seltis Way along Idaho Street down to Sixth Avenue. We installed or improved 18 pedestrian ramps to current ADA standards, and we installed a rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of I-90 and Seltis Way on the on-ramp. The overall cost of the project, when it is fully completed, is going to be estimated at about $360,000 for construction. The engineer's estimate was originally at $355,000, and the original bid was right at $329,000. There was about $30,000 of change orders. That was to incorporate some additional asphalt removal, some irrigation services that we weren't aware of, the installation of delineators along Seltis Way to meet current federal highway administration requirements, the installation of two additional ADA ramps, and some additional riprap and silt fence. When the project's all done, we'll have spent about $40,000 of city money on a half-million-dollar project. To look at it in other terms, for $40,000, the city could have installed a rapid rectangular flashing beacon and eight pedestrian crosswalks. With our grant, we were able to get 10 additional pedestrian crosswalks and a half-mile of sidewalk. In the end, this project is about addressing a visible need. People walking along a dirt path to get to their destinations and replacing it with a safer and more reliable pathway. It's about when this concrete sidewalk went in, a young mother I saw walking with her two kids along the concrete sidewalk and not having to be close to the roadway, or it's that elderly woman I saw with a walker before we put the pathway in, who was walking along this route because she needed to get to the other side for whatever her destination was. I thank you for your participation and support of this project, and I stand for any questions that you might have.
Excellent job. Excellent. Wow.
Like sidewalk, it's, it's nice.
Yes. Very good.
Sure.
As I was following with the drone there, is that swale gully there, is that going to accommodate snow plowed, so it's not going to be plowed up over the?
There's about 10, 10 feet of distance in there. Some snow will get up onto that sidewalk. That is almost impossible to prevent. But the Parks Department is going to be doing the snow removal along that sidewalk when they get around to doing that, along with their, their other priorities.
Yeah. I think that will accommodate quite a bit of it down there.
I, I hope so as well.
I've been watching that go in, and, and as a motorist, not just as a pedestrian, but as a motorist, I feel a lot safer because when you had pedestrians walking right alongside the road, you know, it was a, it was dangerous to be a motorist, not knowing if they, they were going to come out in the road or not. So I think it's, I think it's a win-win, for sure.
And those rapid rectangular flashing beacons will do a really good job, along with the painted crosswalk at that location, to provide better emphasis for the pedestrians to push that button, get that light, but also with the signs there to reinforce to the drivers to be a little bit more aware of pedestrians in that area.
Yeah. Good.
Rob, is there any plans to do something with 4th Street, so people coming across don't just zip right across to the freeway on-ramp? Because I see it day in and day out when you come down 4th Street, even though it says, you know, right-hand turn only, across that intersection as soon as there's a break.
There used to be some delineators in that intersection to help dissuade them. How effective those were is questionable.
They're gone.
We can have streets put those back up. I don't think they'll last very long. But in the longer term, city staff has on the transportation master plan and in the pending impact fees updates, if it gets approved, we're looking at putting in either a traffic signal or a roundabout. Our hope and preference would be to be a roundabout at this intersection so that we can get access from 4th Street back onto that freeway in a safe manner.
That'd be good.
Good. That's a good question.
Just a safety thing that I see regularly that, and that, that does give some, just thinking of all those apartments coming out onto 4th Street, and they're going to come down there and, who knows where they're going to go, but.
It is a need, and we want to get to it.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Nicely done. Next item up's lifeguard report.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jill McDowell. I'm a recreation supervisor for the city of Post Falls. I, I welcome the thought that you guys want to learn a little bit more about the lifeguard program. I've overseen the program for the last 14 years, and it's grown and it's changed over those 14 years. As you well know, the calculations to open the beach come from Avista. They are the ones who say when the actual beach can actually be opened, and when they close the coffer gates. Once those coffer gates are closed, it takes maybe a couple hours for our Parks Department to get down all of the fencing that's up. When they get the fencing down, we hopefully have the beach up and ready to go. We like to say Memorial Day to Labor Day, but oftentimes, it's not. It's usually mid-June to the mid-August, I like to say, that Avista determines when we open it, but the lifeguards ultimately determine when we close it because of their schedules. What you may not know is lifeguards are a dying breed. They no longer have the big influence that they used to have back in the day. As you know, Hayden and Coeur d'Alene have both done a As you know, Hayden and Coeur d'Alene have both done away with having lifeguards. Right now, Liberty Lake and Sandpoint have lifeguards, as well as obviously Post Falls. Why are they a dying breed? Well, it's hard to find really good staff. We have to go, we have to get lifeguards that are very young to do a very adult job. It's very hard for them to want to come in and do that. It's also very expensive to train the lifeguards. And if you talk to any insurance agent, they're going to say that they're a liability. What are our good reasons for having them? We had 19 saves this summer. It's a presence of having those lifeguards in the park that makes it helpful to the PD because we are there, we're making sure that vandalism's not being done. It's an extra set of hands for Post Falls Festival. They're already down there. We utilize them when they're down there at the beach. What does it take to be a lifeguard? Well, it takes a lot of hard work on their part, and it takes a lot of, a lot of training as far as the pre-training. I actually make the lifeguards go through a pre-training program, which is, takes one evening, but they actually have to do the water test, which is back and forth to make sure that they have the stamina and they actually know how to swim. Then it's one week after we determine who can proceed forward. After that, we make sure that they do a one-week training session, and that's expensive. It costs about $2,000 for the group to go through. That's to get, that depends, it can range, the range can differ depending on how many returnees that we have. Once we get the training done, they do an in-house training with HR, media, and ourselves and Parks Department. There's a daily training that they do at the beach themselves. Like I said, the cost to train lifeguards is about $2,000. We, as a city, provide suits and shirts for them. We also have to update their equipment. This year, the update for the equipment was about $4,200. The salary for this year for the lifeguards was $23,436 for a total cost of, to the city, of $27,548. A typical day in a lifeguard is check the safety issues that we might have, walk the beach, do their in-house training that they do, they're 45 minutes prior to opening the beach. They help the park staff as needed and when they can. Their first priority is to be down at that beach, taking care of the customers that are down at the beach, but on their downtime, and there is downtime, they will help pick up trash and whatnot. They determine, depending on smoke and/or heat, whether they're going to have a 20-minute rotation, so there's three stands down there, 20 minutes on each stand, or 10 minutes on each stand. And they assist with first aid needs as needed. They deal with large groups and daycares. And then if you ever go down to the beach, you will hear them go, "get off the buoy line, and please do not jump off the bridge." Those are the favorite things that they do. They also have to make sure that they get everybody out at the end of the day. Once they get the guards out at the end of the day, they have a saying that they have to do, or not the guards, I should say, the customers. Lifeguards have to say, "the water is clear. Lifeguards are off duty and will be guarded beach again at 11:00 a.m." That makes sure that everybody's out of the water. There's no liability on the city. You never want to say, "swim at your own risk." The major issues that they come across are dogs in the park, alcohol on the beach, because people don't understand that alcohol on the beach is supposed to be on the grass area and not the sand area. Obviously, they're used oftentimes as daycare. We do have parents come down all the time saying, "can you please watch our kids?" It's like, well, we will, but we can't guarantee that we're going to be there for them all the time. We have to watch everybody else, too. They also have the issue of water vessels, such as paddleboards and kayaks. People want to swim and kayak in the same area that's a guarded beach. Their biggest problem is that they're not taken seriously. They are 14, or 15 to 18-year-olds, and they're dealing with adults. The issues that I have is that this is sometimes the first job that they have, and so, and I'm not down there all the time. So to actually guide them is a little bit harder to do because I'm doing it from a distance. And then finding that quality staff is really hard. Overall, I believe that Post Falls benefits from having lifeguards down at the beach. And because of that, I have noticed an increase, because we do have the lifeguards, of more people coming down to Camelan Park. They, they love the beach, they love the fact that there are lifeguards down there, and we get told that all the time. This year, actually, my lifeguards implemented upon themselves to paint rocks. They painted the rocks, they'd hide the rocks, and then they'd have people come over and find the rocks, and there was little gifts that they gave them. So it's a pleasure to work with these individuals and guide them along the way. I've done it for the last 14 years, and it's tons of fun for me. Frustrating at times, but still tons of fun. So, any questions?
Questions to Jill?
No. How hard is it to find kids to do this job?
It is extremely hard. There have been years that I've been a little leery of the people that we actually have down at the beach. It would've been almost, in my opinion, better to not have had a guard, guarded beach because of that. This year, what I did is we had very strong, a strong staff. And so what they did was, they went out and they went to the swim team. They went out and they found people that they knew, and so, and we did that swim test. I had it on NeoGov as well. But NeoGov, actually, the two people from NeoGov ended up not showing up. So, so I did end up relying on the people that we had. This year was rare because we had so many people that wanted to be guards, but that is not normally the case.
Steve.
I'd like to compliment the job Jill has, because I was probably about as strong a supporter as lifeguards, as they, there are. And over the years, I think the average age went from about 23 of a lifeguard to about 16, 17. So it is an issue. I know the Crox Center this year had to close their water slides quite a few times just from lack of guards, so. So it's, is, who's doing, is the Crox Center still doing some of the training, or the Spokane Valley? Why are you doing most of the training on your own?
I have Jeremy Siegler. He actually used to be one of our head guards. He does a start guard program. The reason we do that versus going American Red Cross is because it's only a three-day intensive program versus being an eight-week program, that they do two hours here, an hour here. So we can get it done condensed, and they can actually be working on it for three days and have, I feel, a better understanding. And then they take those skills. Jeremy will work with me all season long and say, "I want them to work on this skill" when they do their trainings. Their trainings can include going on hikes down, on, down at Camelan, or they can be doing board exercises, they can be doing swimming exercises, they do races. We used to, at one point in time, we used to have competition with Coeur d'Alene and Hayden, which was kind of fun, but now that's kind of out of the question.
I've got one other question for you. Without Coeur d'Alene, Hayden having guards, have you seen an increase from Spokane daycares and Spokane church camps using?
Spokane, the Boys and Girls Club locally, our local daycares take great advantage of that. Yeah, we do have a big increase.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. The last staff report is the summer street maintenance update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have the dubious honor of being the last staff report, so I guess with my apologies, this is a quick summary of the work the Streets Department has done throughout the city of Post Falls on street maintenance. I wanted to give a thanks to Ken Peterson, who is our newly promoted street supervisor, to Clint Born, our newly promoted traffic lead, and to Radley Turcot, our newly promoted maintenance lead. All three of these guys did a great job this summer, as well as the crew working for them. They're all newly promoted, so this was their first go at a lot of these projects, sort of with them running the show. So they did a great job. We did our usual program of overlay paving. This is where we grind off asphalt and replace it with new asphalt.
You're not on the screen if you intend to.
Oh, I pushed the wrong button.
There we go.
I've got pictures.
You've got to have pictures.
So we did an overlay program where we grind off asphalt and add about two inches of new asphalt on top of that. Did 1.38 centerline miles, so more lane miles than that. I know we did a section of pole line, it's got four lanes on it, or three lanes, I guess, the way it's striped. With that, when we do it, we do the ADA ramp improvements anywhere that we do the overlay program. So that included 13 new ADA ramps. We also paved a water line, or alley for a water line project that was just off of Spokane Street. Built a new pad at the Streets facility to put the sweepings on and other various small paving jobs. It's hard to overstate the value of having a paving crew that can go patch something that we just tore up for an emergency water line repair. That is 0.8% of our streets by centerline mile. So to give you a sense of that, that's a good start, is a good way to say that. We did a crack seal program, looking for a metric. What we came up with was we put 4,500 pounds of tar in the little cracks throughout the city. So it's a pretty decent amount of crack seal. That's a program we could do, as Lynn and I have talked numerous times, we could spend all summer doing that. So it's a good investment to keep the water out and keep it from heaving. We also do a annual summer chip seal. This year, we got 3.79 miles of chip seal accomplished. That was a contract job. Poe Asphalt won the bid for that at $329,000. That is about 2.2% of our streets. As far as sweeping goes, we did not get as much street sweeping done this summer as we would have liked to have. We have two street sweepers. They were both down a substantial amount of time this summer with mechanical issues. One of them, people keep flashing their lights at us and saying it's on fire. It's not on fire. It's got an injection pump problem, but the good news there is we have new sweeper on order and anticipate that arriving later this fall or early winter. So we'll use it next spring. As far as painting and striping goes, in addition to the crosswalk that we helped the police department out with last week, there's 1,350 gallons of paint that's been applied to city streets and counting. They're still out painting when the weather permits, and it's going to be a little bit warmer than it was last week. Something, not new, but something we've been focusing on this summer is getting some sidewalks repaired, where sidewalks have heaved because of, largely because of tree roots. As some of our street trees are maturing, they come in conflict with sidewalks. So we've been working with urban forestry to get sidewalk repairs accomplished, and you'll see a lot of places throughout the city look like this for a little while until we get the dirt butt back. In terms of challenges, the biggest thing that all three of the supervisors mentioned to me is staffing. We've had a number of retirements, we've had some folks move on to other jobs, and both recruiting and recruiting experienced staff are challenges. We've got, I've got a graph here to show it. I had a graph. So this is our staffing level at the end of September. The red is staff who are either out on medical leave or vacant. So our department of about a dozen people is not a department of a dozen people. There's a variety of reasons for that, and we're hopefully hiring some folks here in the next few weeks, but it has been, something has been a struggle for us to find folks who aren't otherwise building roads somewhere for a construction crew. As far as our paving project goes, for example, there was a number of times where the paver was kind of idling there, waiting for a truck to make it back around from the paving plant to haul more asphalt. And with that, any questions you'd have, I'd be happy to take a shot at answering.
Well done again. And I know you guys, it's a non-stop, non-stop task. Appreciate the efforts you guys put forth. And several years ago, we had the issue with the chip seal, and I haven't heard any complaints since then, so appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you.
Steve.
Jill, I got one quick question. With winter coming up, I know one of the issues was the snow gates, was the drivers getting used to them? Just the experience from using them? Do we have those drivers coming back, or did we lose a lot of those? Do we have to start with new, new snowplow drivers?
So I'll go back to this slide. We're.
Is it going to be a training issue again this year?
We're hoping to do some training in November before the snow flies, so that we rely pretty heavily on some seasonal staff to supplement our full-time staff. Hopefully, we'll bring on five seasonal employees this winter. We would not have returning seasonals. So we're looking at at least five that we need training, and then obviously filling these vacancies for the full-time staff. So folks who did it last year will hopefully be an asset in that training program. We've been talking about building a snow plowing cone course in our street slot, so we're trying to improve the training that we did give ahead of snow time, but there will be some folks doing their first year of snow plowing this year.
I thought they did great last year, and let's, just hope we don't get all of our snow in the month of fit, one month.
I'll take that.
Get out a little bit more next year.
We got it all the other day.
I'll have everybody know, I think we had it off the streets in like 30 minutes.
Appreciate that.
Great. Thanks, John.
I have, I guess I have one more question on the vacancies. What seems to be the primary challenge to finding people? Just, nobody wants to work on streets, or is it good, or?
It's a little bit of all of that. So to find an experienced equipment operator in general right now is sort of an impossible task. With the pace of construction currently, it's just a really, it's an employee-friendly job market. And then we're offering not super-high starting wages for folks, so.
What is the starting wage?
I believe it's 16 something an hour for somebody with a CDL.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor comments tonight? I don't have any. Council comments?
I have a question. It came up in our last meeting. I know that Mr. Spencer came forward and threw out this idea of, what's the term? Design elements?
Moratorium or something.
Yeah, moratorium. Is that, can anybody address that? Is that a big deal? Or is that something we could do?
I think Jill is handing you.
Okay.
So moratoriums in Idaho are a difficult thing to pull off. The statute was updated about 2003. There's essentially a two-step process. One is for an emergency moratorium, and that lasts 180 days approximately. To get there, you can go through the process in an abbreviated fashion without having to go through the planning commission. However, you have to be able to make a finding based on evidence that there's an imminent threat of peril to health, safety, welfare, which is a fairly high threshold. If you want it to last more than that 180, I think it's 182 days, you can go back through the process, but using the normal adoption process, adopt an interim moratorium or ordinance. But again, you have to make that, that finding, once again, that there is an imminent threat of peril to the life, safety, or welfare. I think that would be a very hard burden to get over in this context.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Pleasant View School, Cowboy Breakfast. They do it twice a year, in the spring and in the fall, and it is a Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00. And the community association, this is fundraising for the maintenance and upkeep restoration of that historic school. So that is, happens only twice a year, and 8:00 to 11:00 on Saturday. And then just a reminder, I know that we had talked about it in May, about the Lyons Haunted House ceasing to, ceasing operation. I think people either forgot or didn't hear that, but, so there is no haunted house this year. In fact, most of it is gone.
Yeah.
Pretty much taken down. But so, you, especially here at the city, you might have people asking you where it is, because I'm surprised that people hadn't paid closer attention that there is no Lyons Haunted House this year, so. That's all I got.
Good.
I'll send out an email to all city employees also, just to remind them, because they get those questions either on the phone or when they're out in public. So I'll send something in the morning.
Thank you. We do not need an executive session tonight, correct?
Correct.
The next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Begin adjourn.
All right. Okay.
We didn't make it three and a half.